Hi Mark.
Hi Mark.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, great.
How are you?
You, for sure. Yeah. Yeah. Alright. That's an even. Yeah.
So.
Yep, just wondering on Mark and James. Did you need something to do?
I had a bit here for a while.
Sure.
No, I needed something. Are you telling me it's not?
No. We put our night things because nobody attended. We sat there for hours with each other. About it. Or Paul?
Mark.
Hey, good.
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 Hi, very nice.
Robbie taking you for a ride yet?
Nope.
What?
I haven't talked to Rob since four days here.
Really?
Yeah.
He needs any help for riding, dude, and I guess I need to do that too. Maybe he's got a problem getting out some day. Some day I'll see what's right after he got.
You know, I didn't even know it until I ran into Mike Brown down at the, uh... Make, uh, later, or, uh, every day, uh, Memorial Day, they, the reunion down at Fairville.
Yeah.
And he says, "Yeah, I said, well, I'll get him to do it for a bit." I said, "Well, no, they never told me. I just seen."
Well, I'm guessing that one of those up there at Rikers was his old. One of the Redones was his old.
Should be.
Yeah, they had three of them.
Oh, did they?
They come out of Riker and had three units.
Really?
I can't figure it out now, but back when they first came out, you know, they were hot and hot and good. But then of course, when Rob showed that picture, you know, online, on Facebook, uh, when he went down to pick it up.
Oh, he did?
That whole, oh yeah, he went down to pick it up in the back.
Yeah.
That whole black lot was filled with nothing but four vents.
Really?
Covered up in that white paper, yeah, stuff, you know?
Yeah. Well, I don't know. More power to it.
Yeah.
I guess he's got more money than I do.
Same here. Either that or we just spend it on different things. Tractor repairs, cattle. All fun things like that. Okay. Can you? We can hear. Morning. I do. Alright. I would. Okay. I'm sure we can do it in a second. Okay, so do that.
Stop sign.
Alright, go. Thank you. Yeah. What's? Yeah. What's? Yeah. 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 Or Paul?
Mark.
Hey, good.
Good.
Good. Good. Good. Good. Good. Good. Good. Good. Good. Good. Good. Good. Good. Good. Robbie taking you for a ride yet?
Nope.
What?
I haven't talked to Rob since four days here.
Really?
Yeah.
He needs any help for riding, dude, and I guess I need to do that too. Maybe he's got a problem getting out some day. Some day I'll see what's right after he got.
You know, I didn't even know it until I ran into Mike Brown down at the, uh, uh... Make, uh, later, or, uh, every day, uh, Memorial Day, they, the reunion down at Fairville.
Yeah.
And he says, "Yeah," he says, "well, I'll get him to do it for a bit." I said, "Well, no, they never told me. I just seen."
Well, I'm guessing that one of those up there at Rikers was his old. One of the Redones was his old.
Should be.
Yeah, they had three of them up there.
Oh, did they?
Now you come out of Riker and have three units.
Really?
I can't figure it out now, but back when they first came out, you know, they were hot and hot and good. Yeah. But then of course, when Rob showed that picture, you know, online, on Facebook, uh, when he went down to pick it up.
Oh, he did?
That whole, oh yeah, he went down to pick it up in the back.
Yeah.
That whole black lot was filled with nothing but four vents.
Really?
Covered up in that white paper, yeah, stuff, you know?
Yeah. Well, I don't know. More power to it.
Yeah.
I guess he's got more money than I do.
Same here. Either that or we just spend it on different things. Tractor repairs, cattle. All fun things like that. Okay. 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 Well, I'm guessing that one of those up there at Rikers was his old. One of the Redones was his old.
Should be.
Yeah, they had three of them up there.
Oh, did they?
Now you come out of Riker and have three units.
Really?
I can't figure it out now, but back when they first came out, you know, they were hot and hot and good. Yeah. But then of course, when Rob showed that picture, you know, online, on Facebook, uh, when he went down to pick it up.
Oh, he did?
That whole, oh yeah, he went down to pick it up in the back.
Yeah.
That whole black lot was filled with nothing but four vents.
Really?
Covered up in that white paper, yeah, stuff, you know?
Yeah. Well, I don't know. More power to it.
Yeah.
I guess he's got more money than I do.
Same here. Either that or we just spend it on different things. Tractor repairs, cattle. All fun things like that. Okay. 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 Yeah. 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 Same here. Either that or we just spend it on different things. Tractor repairs, cattle. All fun things like that. Okay. 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 All fun things like that. Can you? We can hear. Morning. I do. I would. Okay. I'm sure we can do it in a second. Okay, so do that.
Stop sign.
All students, all students, okay, put them in. Alright, go.
Just got it all?
Yeah. What's?
In the back.
That wasn't a good one. Yeah. Alright, time clock both need fled. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Uh, entertain motion to approve the agenda as written. And properly, yes, I'll second that, if properly moved and sectioned, we approve the agenda as written. Any further discussion? Carrying that on in favor, say aye. Aye, I'll post same sign when we should carry. Or Paul, you're up. You gotta come on up here.
Well, I've got a box of collection here.
Okay.
This is what I've collected on the road. Here, on my road. It's 198 Road.
Yep.
Got a nice green red rock, you know, out there in the middle of the road.
Have we, uh...
You mowed it. You mowed it.
Are we pulling it out of ditches or what?
No, a mower hit it and threw it up on the road.
Okay, so it wasn't ditch, okay.
It was about three feet inside the road.
Sure.
Uh, then we got a nice little cedar tree here. It was middle of the road. And this is the really, the good part. And there was about five of them. All of them in the middle of the road.
Okay.
And you know, I have probably four women to drive the road. And they don't look at the road like a man does.
Yeah.
Anyway, we already had one castle there. And when you get, run one tire, you have to buy, all wheel drive, you have to buy all four. So, I just think, uh, we haven't had a maintainer on that district for a long time. I don't think seven, seventy percent of the road wouldn't drain the water into the ditches.
And you're speaking strictly of 198?
Well, I mean, I've got, any of them, any of them in that southwest district.
Okay.
Uh, so, I just wish we had a maintainer. That's all I gotta say. Uh, 198th and Old Road, you know, I thought someplace along line, uh, that I read in the paper where if a maintainer went by it, they're supposed to fix it.
That's, that's what we're trying to get.
Yeah.
You know, trying to get that mindset, you know, is kind of hard to make.
The puddles that have been there forever.
Okay.
So, same way with 198th and Cator, there's been one right there in the northwest, or northeast corner of it. It's been there forever.
Yeah.
Never been in touch with it.
And is that Brandon's area?
Yeah.
Okay, Brandon's been off on the, on special project, yeah, so we're gonna...
And minimum maintenance roads haven't been touched forever, so...
Okay.
Alright, that's all I gotta have to say.
Are the minimum maintenance roads, are they just grass grown up? Have people been going down on the...
Well, uh, we had sunflowers growing up so bad on the side of them that I finally took the rotary mower because it couldn't get to them. Because the sunflowers were ten foot tall.
Okay.
And you know, so I just mowed them. But anyway, you want this stuff or you want...
I, I don't think there's a need to be sawing it. We'll try to, we'll try to figure out what we can do better on that.
So, alright, that's all I had. Thank you.
Alright, thanks Paul. Alright, Scott, what you got?
Well, I just walked it up here to let her, um, have the, the circle part pretty much done. They, uh, went back and shaped it up and rolled it in, uh, today. And, uh, Brandon was going to haul a little rock down and run into it. We've got a couple of spots. Told him to do a straight with, you know, Brandon brought the rock right now. Uh, other than that, we've got the, uh...
Well, how much, what's your budget on year run? How much of, uh, we got that scored out?
Yeah, as of the 21st, we still have $12,900.
Okay.
That's, alright.
So, you talked to John about the people there behind?
Had not.
This cold rock, a cam from Lake back to this place, and then you had a road that had built up and stuff. And I'm pretty sure my cam would have taken it out.
Well, is that your cam? He brought one in the other day.
That was mine.
Okay, and you have about, and that's what I was told, I said, Tom, I said, you have about that much room between that and the table.
These are pretty active, the rooms have been built up.
That's same concern.
Well, I'll take it down.
That's what Paul, right, he said, it'd be greater to get it where?
So, we need to call or something?
I, I check with them.
You won't check with them?
It's a lot of return. I got to make this letter.
No, but no ahead of time. It's probably not good.
Uh, uh, okay, so on that, uh, year run deal, I've got a cedar lined up to pick up on some of the pine. And the grass seed, uh, we brought there in that bay area, and that's even the other areas. 278, West 75, we talked about this, they aren't, uh, that's about, we're gonna take care of.
Okay.
166, I called you about the other day, uh, highway over Harwood. We've been rocking that thing twice this year already. Uh, that is one of the, we did three times last year. It's a little hack log. That road just meets the rock. Dirt is there, it's sand. Uh, they pulled this stuff up out of the ditches the other day, so it is, got a lot of dirt on there, but we have many rain. It's getting packed in. What I'd like to do is, like, why here, is go in and put two inch rock down over that where we can, and then come back and put the inch and four, or... Let's say, put, put the inch and four like a window, and like I said, we've had five different times the past year of rock there. I'd like to do something to get a better base down.
Sure.
Version. So, if we get tall, it's about 166, I'll get dusty, muddy, whatever, you know, until we get down there and do that, it's okay with you guys.
Well, well, that's one, that's one of the things I've been asking you, so before we get started on something like that, uh, as soon as we get done, the plan was, as soon as we get over the dub with, uh...
Year run.
Year run, we're going to dub it.
Correct. Probably not, unless we start going to 4%.
That was, that was the plan, to use that for the, for dubbing, because, you know, we, ever since I got in here, all I kept calling on dubbing when we're gonna get it done, is start it before I got in, and we're still fiddling with it. So, we need to make that the next priority. As soon as year runs done, we need to move there like we said we're going to. So, before we start anything, any project on 168, 166. Like I said, that was what 4% was supposed to be, was for, uh, in dubbing.
Yeah, we have touched it.
Yeah.
I think we're around 416,000.
Because we had, we had talked that, uh, instead of putting down, what, four inches or whatever, we were gonna put down, uh, two or three or something like that.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Yep.
Exactly.
We gotta, we gotta get that done. That's a, that's a priority.
Uh, the pipe, I don't even heard it, they didn't use that last week, they started on the, uh, they started on it today, tomorrow.
Okay.
We're working on it. The old sheriff's office, I don't know if that's closed.
Okay. In the school district?
Yeah, I suppose.
Okay.
Uh, after, this two down here, we're probably back here, that big two, uh, 246, uh, these are the light, uh, 246, that's it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's one of the, now here, yeah, okay, perfect.
That's our next offer.
Okay.
And that's already sitting out there.
Okay.
Been there long.
Yeah. Perfect.
The re-farm in Landville, uh, this week, last week, uh, the hours, and as I say, on Saturday, then our winter hours, uh, after this weekend. Then, James got some information on fuel. So, go.
Yeah.
I just kind of wanted to bring you guys up to speed, I know that we've had a lot of questions on some of the reports that I've been doing, so, um, the, uh... General fund has changed, which is the FSA routes. Um, I've got all the numbers and paperwork done for that. Um, some of the forms have changed, so I've started going and just entered that, and I should be able to send that in, um, this week. And then on the fuel refunds, um, I've got all the numbers, everything, I'm working on that paperwork, because some of the forms have changed. But I've been in contact with KOD on those. Um, still working on where we need to be with the universe, but I put that to the back because these seem to be done.
And those, those reports, you're talking about, you're sure that's all part of the information that was missing? Got deleted, whatever, what?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so we're, we're pretty much exhausted with that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Yes. Uh, this Tecalment, there's the, the fuel box, or the big tank that was moved out to the main shop. Um, it came out, they put it in, they gave me this sun drive, couldn't get it to work for some reason. The tech that I was on the phone with, um, had me put this in the computer and put, um, a different program on top of it, instead of what they had already loaded for me. And then it really wouldn't work. So then they said they sent them on a box that was supposed to be a cellular box and not the, um, not the super land box that has the even up where it's just wired completely into it. Um, and then they said it was missing a memory card. Was I was going back through all the emails, um, I found that originally Carly had ordered the cellular box. Realized it wouldn't work. She let Hoydale know, Hoydale let Tecalment know that we needed the land box instead of the cellular box. So, they sent the new one, well, because again, a lack of communication, they're saying we got the wrong box, but by the emails that I go back through, we could see the right box, the text had the right information. So, Carly's main contact with Tecalment has been... So, Carly's main contact with Tecalment has been off, out of the office last week. And it has been put on her desk as top priority to get taken care of this week. So hopefully, we can get some things straightened out with that.
Okay.
Um, again, I think we've got four different people not communicating well. And I think that's where we're at with a lot of things right now, it's just not keeping up and not communicating on a regular basis. And just kind of pushing it to the side and, um, you know, we don't know what's going on.
Sure.
I mean, apparently, they, they're saying that we had to sign this piece of paper, and we had to pay for the plow. Although that was within our contract of E and P, they, they were supposed to sell this up. So, again, Hoydale, Tecalment, thought that we were supposed to do all this, and in reality, Carly had done it. They just didn't go back far enough and see where she had signed it and sent that contract in.
Right.
So.
But then she signed it up under E and P.
Yeah, so apparently, she had signed it out under, um, yeah, Noddy Pine instead of Jackson County River Bridge. So, that's another thing that she's working on, getting straightened out. So, yeah, I mean, I have her signature on that right here.
So we're basically waiting on three different entities to get their stuff together so that we can get our stuff together and leave it?
Right, and then I guess they said that I should not have had access to the database, because they have the, they have the NRL of our drivers and equipment. That would be using out of that tank, um, and they said I should have never been able to have access to that, because we didn't, they didn't have the contract. And I went, if we didn't have the contract, I'll be able to put it in, you know? Again, just not paying attention, um, not communicating. And then, on, I just wanna let you guys know, we're, and you already knew it, we're gonna have a lot of pushback on the same Zara. So we got an email the other day, um, and I know that you guys know that Matt came down, he's not with us, um, got some hiccups. Um, Scott might didn't have all the, um, rights to, to change things. Um, and he's supposed, now supposed to, he got in touch with the engineer to try to get that fixed. In the meantime, Scott has been entering that every day, um, because September, February, he moved Matt engine. Um, to see if this is gonna, yeah, where, yeah.
Again, another.
To see if it's going to actually.
We had, we had run across some things, two things here, uh, for doing this stuff. Uh, instead of entering, well, two things, is in the STAR program, all the roads are listed out, and there you type in the code. A table, a block, a K, and every road, K, just pop up, so.
Okay.
That's our one where, that's, that's one thing we're trying to get them to talk together, rather than have a driver put all that information in. So, we ran into was, the driver is going to this position, he's dumping, rather than him write all this stuff out. There's a button that can be installed, it's called a panic button. I just told Matt, I said, well, once we took that button, rather than be a panic button, and say, the driver drives out here, he dumps his load, he hits that button. Then Mark's right where he dumped, and all that information is already automatically entered. So that's something new that we've been trying to do. Uh, right now, the driver would have to do it the same, type all the information in, uh, where the road was, and things like that. So, again, in the developmental stages, we've got a program, is that something new we ran into the other day that we would like to try to do? Again, can't do that till we get the meeting and discuss all that. As far as the forms, uh, the one form that we're working on with the drivers is here, and I can show you how to run it, how to go into it, uh, if you want. Submit it, and then it's basically ready to talk to the STAR program.
It is ready to talk to the STAR program?
As long as the STAR program is connected, uh, again, have, have our genie a hundred percent on that.
Okay, hang on, we're, we're getting to different things here. You're saying it's not right, you're changing, you're gonna know.
Well, they haven't, they haven't put it together yet.
Okay, so we're still not talking?
The two, the two systems are not set up together yet.
Yes, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
They're not, they're, they're not?
They're, they're, I think our genie's in, she's copying the, that STAR, but I'm hard in, we are not copying that STAR.
And that was supposed to have been handled, we, you know, sit down there at the conference, we talked about. That was one of the things was supposed to be handled within three months. And that was one of the things that I agreed to sign a contract for, because he guaranteed three months and it would be done, and we don't have it yet.
It's the, I mean, it sounds like you were saying initially, there was administrative.
Right, right, they, they, he's making out the nineteen. He, he tells us, got frustrated, he goes, I've been sending you guys information to change this, and I said, I've been telling you, I can't change it. So he got in there, our system is what does, and he was, yeah, you can't change it, I said, I know how to tell me that. But he can, he, he would sit there, and I think him, administrative rights to go in, but he could change things, but we could not. And I said, that's what I'm telling you, and you kind of back off, and, and, so.
What are you changing to, putting changes to?
It's, it's there, Sam's heart, it's, it's kind of a development, something that, that we came up with, we said, hey, we got an idea, we wanna do this. Right, and they're kind of building this as we're going, uh, yeah.
So, so that ridge program, you know, communicates between Sam's era and.
STAR program.
Uh, so they didn't have the administrative privileges to make changes to that ridge program.
Correct.
And then, he came in and, you're right, he did.
Right, and, and the changes that we wanted done, he said right there, did, within about five or ten minutes. So we got the drop downs for the rock, and the glory, and things like that, so, as you go through that. He come down and say, what forty you got to run, like solder, what rocks, uh, two inch rock, and then, type it in. And Maggie, and I said, here be my inventory, so he sat down, he worked it out, so, so he started to talk to us.
Alright, so let's, let's hang it down, it's got Sam's era isn't working, to bridge separately working, it's not connecting with STAR, or is that?
They haven't gone to that step right there, because data information, we didn't have enough data, information to go into Sam's era for genie to pull it over to see if it would work this stuff.
What do you mean, do you know, add a smart ads?
You gotta build up, yeah, fill in out, well, fill in out the forms, you know, like the different job activities, the forms and stuff that they do. But we also have to go in and build the other forms.
Alright, yeah, but one other factor, are we supposed to build these up, or are those supposed to be done?
They, they will help us do it.
Well, what they're doing is, I think they're creating the subcategories specifically, reviews, right?
Correct.
So, you've got, you've got here in STAR, but they don't have it in Sam's era, they have to build a person for the team.
And that's what I'm saying, though, that was supposed to have been done, we talked to Matt at the convention, it's in November, December, yeah, December first, December. And I told him, I was hesitant to sign a contract for this, until he could pretty much guarantee me that everything that we were asking to be done was gonna be done. As far as the communication between STARS and Sam's era, the drop down menus, everything that, that, uh, was supposed to have been done, has not been done. And he said, he said, I will have that, I will have that within three months, and it hasn't happened.
And I know for a fact that we emailed Sam's era, these drop downs for the different rock, and the stories, and again, that was not done.
And I will say too, Sam's era, one thing he said, Matt said, Salem, was that they would build this program and do this. Because it's gonna help things sell out to other counties. And we're kind of the giddy pig, but we're being the giddy pig, and we're paying for something that we're not gonna be able to use yet. And I'm getting a little frustrated with it. If I'm paying for something, I can't use it, I'm really frustrated. So, I, you know, I don't know what our recourse is gonna be.
I remember, the original point, the GPS system was one price, and then to have the forms added on was like four thousand dollars. So, again, we're using, we're using the GPS system, but we're not using the forms.
Okay, let me back up, because this is an issue, because a couple of months ago, maybe, you know, we talked about problems with GPS. So, we have GPS systems on the vehicles that need it, all the different.
Definitely, definitely. Naples, uh, the ninth, well, twenty, they had their deal out, we have Naples and stuff, twenty, and we're actually having some of that, so everything is hooked up.
So, if Sam's era was an independent product, that just tracked things, did whatever we signed up to do for just that part, other than four thousand dollars for bridge.
Right.
That's functioning in full.
Yes.
Okay. What we have is issues, and it's early, you said, a few, three months, the connection is.
And it was that, you know, and that was verbal.
Right.
Which is a bad thing, you know, I understand that, but there again, I'm, I'm, I'm very highly disappointed in Sam's era. And I know Salem will tell you anything they want to tell you to sell you the product, and that's why I was hesitant to sign the contract with them. But, I, I, I don't know what our recourse is now, because like I said, we're being a giddy pig to, for Sam's era, to build this product. To sell to other entities. You know, if that's the case, then, you know, don't charge me the four thousand dollars that you're charging me to build the forms when we're the giddy pig. We're the best subject.
Yeah, and that's, might be, we're, we've talked about that specifically, kind of, that, that.
And we gave him a copy of all the time cards and explained to him how, you know, how each one works. We gave him a copy of some of the stuff that were filled out for him, so he kind of knew how to build the forms. Again, we just started with the rock quality one, track driver.
We wanted to get long form done, and we're being, and knowing that when I put in inch and quarter block here, it's gonna transfer to the right spot of the grid. Rather than have four, five inch forms.
Yeah, so.
So, back when, I mean, we, he was here, we gave him all the information, and again, Scott was emailing him continuously. And he was also sending it to my email, to keep track of in my Sam's era file, um, you know, that, hey, we're missing this, we're missing that, you know?
And.
Continuously.
I, I, I'll, I'll say this, once again, Matt is a salesman.
I see.
And, so he, he's the middleman, and if he's not passing information on to tech people to get stuff built.
And, and that's why I told him a while back, is, uh, I sent him an email, and I included the engineer into the report. I'd like to mad out the picture and describe it, right?
Yeah, I would too.
You know, but I don't have a technical.
Because, like I say, he's, he's salesman, adult salesman while I was in tech. And they won't promise you anything, and then turn to the text and say, there you go, now you gotta do it. And text like, well, how the hell am I gonna do this?
Right.
You know?
We got the product stuff, and then, just like the thing that we found the other day, about, you know, is it possible to hit a button rather than write a location down? You know, we need to log, we have to.
Well, yeah, and that should, should be marked in right there.
But then, see, and that's something genie brought up, a few months ago, uh, we were talking about roads, and I think she goes, well, I could just take off the, the driver's there. Something like that, so.
Yeah, but you should be able to drop in, push a button, drop in, I started, push a button, drop in, I did it again.
I did, I did, I did, you know, I dragged my watch, I logged in here at work, you know, when I stopped the truck, picked up, and I drove to the quarry. Picked up, I drove to here, rode, and I headed, that's how many miles.
Yeah.
So, again, that was, again, something to, to share, to talk about.
And, and we do keep adding things, you know, and, and there are lots of other options that they have that, that are more on the fleet side, more than on a county road bridge side. So, I know, I mean, a lot of that stuff is something that we would be able to utilize. But one of the things that they did send out, effective October seventh, they're going to do multiple factor authentication enforcement for highly privileged, privileged roles. And for driver accounts. So, starting eight, October seventh, um, passwords must be a minimum of eight characters, which is not unusual, okay? Each driver has to have their own email address or phone number to log in, to put this stuff on. And I'm going, and you probably need to come and have a meeting with the road bridge department, because they're not gonna put this app on their phone.
No, I don't.
What they're doing is, is that they're, the phone messaging, contacting the, kind of, or something like that. Well, I don't know if there's gonna be a, if it happens, but they have one there?
Me and Bill?
Like, Scott's got the app on his phone, but I refuse to put it on my phone.
Yeah, well, I'm here.
Yeah, well, I mean, my personal phone, I don't, I don't want it on my personal phone, because I'm not going to be working off my personal phone. Do I occasionally, yes, the guys will send me pictures of stuff, maybe they print this out for me. You know, this is something I summed up on, I, you know, I want Scott to see it, um, you'll print it off and put this note on it for me, you know, so I do that, I don't mind doing that. But to put an app on a personal phone, which a lot of them don't know how to use the app, you know? Um, and they're, like, they can't force us to do that, that takes up space, some of them don't have a hundred dollar, which I do not understand. Scott is not, why is Scott's app have a hundred dollar bank account? So, when he travels, he has a hotspot on the microphone.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It's like six extra dollars a month to be called.
Yeah.
You know, so, they just don't understand that, they don't live in that world, um, so, to tell them that they have to do this is a requirement of your job. You probably have to change.
Yeah, we're gonna change it, but again, we have, you know, good stuff.
But there are phones, yeah.
For.
But if you don't, you're assuming that they have to have the app.
They.
I don't think they have to have the app.
What are they gonna?
What happens in multi-factor, a lot of the times, is, is that you, they, they're just wanting the phone number of the email to send the code to, to rack. Okay, so, I used to have, I'm changing my Microsoft account, it's sent to my Apple tunnel with just a code. And I tap the code into computer screen where I'm signing in.
Well, we want them to sign in, in the front.
Yeah, but do they have the interface there?
Probably.
Okay, so that's the problem, because, but it, but multi-factor is only when they sign in.
Yeah, daily. It's an extra layer of protection that they're doing?
Well, it, it got.
And it does say it'll send them a one-time code, but after that, they have to log in with a password that's connected with either that phone number or that email address.
Well, that means every day that they log in, they're going to be, they're going to get a text saying, put this number in. Every day, and the question, where it's not, it's, I'm, it's, because they're not gonna stay logged in, right?
Right, no.
But while I'm hiding, stay logged, you know, whenever I go in there, they, the driver app, they pull it right up there, that, that's me, you know, that's Scott. And if I, if I leave the vehicle, uh, the day before, it's all not gonna go with that, unless I change.
You have to log out, you have to log in and out every day.
There you go, so they're gonna be logging in and out every day, because just in case you're not driving the same truck every day or whatever, or you've heard some deals in different trucks.
Right, reasonable.
So, I, I understand that, but then again, they're gonna, I know the argument's gonna come up, it's gonna be, I'm using my personal phone to get a code, so you're gonna have to pay to sign on the.
Well, I'm gonna be on that, what was that last, uh, basis we had?
April?
Yeah, we're all, yeah, April. Everybody had, so we're, we're getting out here, so that paper check, everybody else is on.
Thirteen.
We're, you know.
And then Gary's sending us a paper check.
Didn't want to face it up, credit out, get handed to him, so it's probably.
I mean, so, so we're, this could take some more discussion, I think, try to figure out what we're gonna do as far as the same Sarah. Like I say, I'm, I'm, I'm getting discussion, but I'm getting tired of it. It was supposed to be in, in effect, full effect. It was supposed to be in effect, full effect. First duty.
Is, isn't that the work that we're doing?
No, that's exactly right.
That's the only reason that I do back GPS because if I have a bridge errors, is if something like this will work.
Yeah, and like I say, that's, that was my, that was my biggest thing right there, is getting all forms working and everything. And there been had a salesman tell me, guaranteed it, but.
To my knowledge, I have not had anybody call in and say, hey, when's the last time I heard a number?
Well.
No, other than they call in, they say, Kate, Brader hasn't been down our road in.
In three months.
Yeah, and we pulled that area up and say, just like the, the rock mine wasn't one sixty-six, the gravel just keeps like disappearing. We talked about that this morning. Um, so all I did was I looked up that area and we've done travel on it twice this year.
Yeah.
Once in May, once in June.
That's what I always said, is if we track it, it may not be, you know, first duty or so, they think we get the rock tickets and the driver call. We can still go back and look.
And like I say, if we can't get this ironed out with Sam's Sarah, then, you know, I want to know what our options are to, to back out of the contract. So, I'm, I'm just hiring, so.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I guess I feel if they're, if they're doing this as a trucking and they're building it, they should have gotten this out.
There you go.
Well, at one time, it was broke out where the GPS was at one price and then.
Right.
The forms is separate, whole thing on quotes, and then somehow all got mixed together.
Well, like I say, they're, they're using us as a guinea pig to get the forms done so they can sell it to other counties and other entities. Why are we paying for it if we're being used as a guinea pig? Because they're going to make money off of it and.
And my thing is, I mean, is Jeanie going to start tracking us more? You know, that's another thing I think, you know?
So, like I say, I'm, I'm.
And how do we do a contract?
I'd like to talk, like I say, like I said last week, look into the contract and see what we can do. If we put a time limit on them to, uh, either get this thing going like they said it was going to work or we're done. So, I don't know if we back out of it, how we back out of it.
Well, I mean, I know, we haven't had time to do without it, and but Scott's been putting down it in every day.
Okay, what data are you putting in right now?
Just random.
Just put it in the rest of the test and I just pick, you know, like ninety-four for it, you know? So, I, I got two inch rock, the solitary, and I pick it down to ninety-four between A and B. And that's what I type in, okay, and then, uh, got the models there. It took me two hours to do, put that in there. And like just, it's just a dummy, it's information, but it is information, just like it's private.
Right.
So, then, you know, got the truck selected and all that stuff.
So, I mean, that's all there, so Jeanie does have the data that she's been stating that she needs.
Okay.
And also, there's a, a deal that you could walk around, which I really like.
Inspections.
Sure, you daily inspect it because I, you hit that deal and you got your trucks like it already. And basically go around and if you have a defect or something, you make a pause and then hold it, drop down, pop up.
Ross chip in the tail line.
Yeah, or it's all.
Okay.
And you mark, mark that, take a picture of it, and then it goes right into Bryson. And also, if you put in there, uh, that has not been resolved, you can put down whether the truck is safe to drive or not safe to drive. And then when Bryson fixes that, you go in there and say it's resolved, fixed, and he picked it up, he did it, and then back to him. But that a lot came on.
Yeah.
This, this quick and simple.
Especially, I mean, and I believe we can print that out to stick in that equipment file.
Correct, that'd be good.
Because we have to have service records.
Okay. All right. Well, you guys, you guys hit on three of the four that I had. What about you first?
Oh, again, I set that to the side, I am working on that. Um, there are some things that they gave us credit for, some things that they gave us the wrong credit for. They were crediting us for the carpenter jeans that they were using, which were at a cheaper rate than the, uh, they were like a spandex.
Parked in our.
Yeah, they were like the spandex blend that they were sending. Um, and those were like fourteen something a week, but they never wore them. They sent them, they sent the samples, tried it on, they didn't like them, told, um, I can't remember his name either.
He called.
Yeah, Ryan, well, no, Ryan's the guy.
Yeah, Ryan's.
Um, told them, you know, these were the wrong ones. We kept receiving them, getting charged for them. Bryson and I would bug them with a orange tag that says, do not return wrong jeans. They'd bring the same ones back the next week. So, I'm.
And with the warm, they're taking, they're washing and bringing back.
So, I'm going by, I started a spreadsheet and I'm going by invoice by invoice, um, what the charge was, what was wrong with that order, the credit that we request, and then the credit that we received.
Which was usually less than the credit that you requested.
Correct. I mean, we sent the sweatshirts back, we never got the sweatshirts back, but they were still charging us for them. Because that was supposed to be their jackets, well, they were just a lightweight pullover and the strings were in their pockets, it was in the pocket. So, when they would go to school or something, it would get stuck in there, you know?
Yeah.
And I'm like, no, it can't happen, you guys bringing yourself on a truck because you're pulling a screwdriver or wrench out of your pocket. So, they were still charging us for those and we weren't getting them. I mean, that's a whole lot of things. Then they were charging us for jeans for Gary and we, Gary didn't give any jeans since February. They, they put delivering Gary jeans altogether in February, beginning of February, and they were still charging us for the jeans.
But, but to me, the more important thing that she's on right now is that part of it.
Right.
We have to set the, you have to decide.
Yeah.
No, and, yeah, we've got to get that set aside because fuel and the, that's how you don't like it stuff.
Yeah, and on that spreadsheet, I've, I've been put in detail, like the item number, the item description, how many were wrong, so that I can match those up with each of those invoices and I can back them.
Correct. And that was kind of what I was going to, you know, ask about too, was, was those things, the, uh, whether everything from the loss reports was updated, which you're, you're close to that, it sounds like. But I think if we, what we have, this many items that we have to get done, I think setting up, you know, a priority list of, I got to get the fuel report done, I got to get, I got to say you're out, you're done. And then from there on down, whether it's Sam's Sarah or getting the rest of the reports in, I think we need to get a, a priority list set up so we can actually take care of that.
Right.
Rather than, you know.
Yeah, I was working on the foreign car reports at one time. Yeah, but the, um, engineering report was a struggle.
Because of the new form?
Just because I'd never done it.
Oh, you've never done it before?
Yeah, these are all, these are all reports that I've never done before.
Right.
So, I, Sarah's going to write full information, even though she only did them once.
Once, twice?
Well, she never did the engineering.
Oh, you never did the engineering report? Okay, okay. Yeah, so I mean, you know, your first time doing everything I've done, totally understand that.
Yeah, so I know they used to do the, the fuel refund every quarter. I did it for the first six months and then all of mid-year doing it every quarter. They said we can send them in as many times as we want. Like you can do it monthly, you can do it quarterly, you can do it once a year, you can do it whenever you want.
Oh, really?
So, there's no.
There's a deadline on that?
Right. The FSA, the, um, Federal Fund Exchange, that does have a deadline. I got all the paperwork done back in March. It just, for some, and I was struggling with the, um, with the system that they use, the K dot website. And for some reason, it didn't go through to them.
Okay.
So, I got to go back in and resend it.
Okay. Usually that's.
Right. Yeah. All right.
Quite certain. May not see, may not see.
No, like I say, there, there's a lot of things that, a lot of things that hit all at once. And I'm, as far as the fuel tank stuff, I'm, I'm thinking that basically all we have, we should have had to do on that was either have administrative rights to put in the drivers in the vehicles or, uh, you know, they should have done it. They, they said we shouldn't have had rights with it, they should have done it, whatever, whatever need to be. But as far as figuring out whether the center's the right box or wrong box, whatever, we're, we're out of that. That's not our responsibility. That's between V and P and the distributor, whoever they bought the stuff from. And I know that you're, you're going above and beyond by keeping track of this and I do appreciate that, so.
Well, a while back when I was struggling with the right box, trying to figure out where it was, I was like, I really don't want to get no of this.
That's, that's their responsibility because that.
And I'm like, well, it's really for my contacts.
Yeah.
So, yes, I've been the one that's been communicating with Hoydale and T. Callman until this pickup came up. And I'm like, I, I can't, I can't do it. And then when they, Scott was at a doctor's appointment and they wanted him to come in right now and sign this piece of paper. And I was one of them, I'd been to my dad's funeral.
Yeah.
And of course, I, I left my file with Mary and, um, of course, she really didn't know what's going on because I've been dealing with those things. And I'm like, no, like, here he is, right here.
Yeah, and like I said, this poor lonesome, we're out of it, we shouldn't be in the middle of this. It's not, we purchased the, we purchased the service and we're, we're out of it.
Well, with Scott and Peter went being there and then talking to Mary and talking to Bryson. Bryson saying, well, it won't work because they put the wrong information on the thumb drive, so they've got to come back and redo it all. And he was working on it and Mary's saying, no, it's the wrong box. Again, they were both told two different things. So, how are we supposed to get this?
That guy's watching. What else, what else can I add? So, and then come in and say, we'll just watch it and it's all wired in and so, and it's.
Understand.
I think of a lack of proper communication.
Yeah.
Because there were changes that were made before. They locked the box in there.
Right. Like I said, I do appreciate the, the extra effort to, to value, so you can lay different in to try to get this straightened out, you know?
We're trying, trying to still catch up.
It's working, but slow and sure.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
So, I'll see, well, if we're branded or somebody that's back in the road here. So, like, to one ninety-eight, road or whatever.
I think, I think one of the things on the one ninety-eight, the things that Paul has shown us, the rock, the limbs, everything else, I think that came from the mower, picking it out into the road. But I don't know, I don't know how, unless we just quit going, I don't know how we're going to keep that from happening.
Yeah, we heard that Russian stuff alongside the road, the big rock, since I could notice, should have heard that.
Yeah.
But then we look back and see, oh my gosh, what was that? I know that it did lock, so.
Oh, yeah.
Trees and songs and stuff that's been there forever.
And typically, there is a lot of Russians went in the road. Yeah.
And the, the gully branch there, the mower, then if that, that probably chopped it up. You know, that, I mean, like, maybe we'll just look down or talk to the box and do it.
Yeah, I don't know.
Very soon.
Yeah, so, anyway.
Okay. Uh, I did, one more thing, I noticed, uh, we're, we're trying to, uh, we sent somebody on T road the other day between, what was it, two thirty-eighth and the one sixteen sixteen intersection? And they moved, they got rid of the, the ditches that are out the road, but then they let that much of a lip alongside, so the water still that ran down through the road, not get out into the ditch.
I think he dealt with that Friday. Remember I got that phone call? I think that's the area on that limit.
Okay.
I think it's.
Uh, yeah, I know, I know. Yeah, yeah.
I, I remember who, who called it in, so I will go pull that work order. So, you know the exact location that.
And like I say.
I thought they were going to say, Mom, it might be a different one, but that.
Well, they took care, they took care of the, the ditches that are coming out the road, but then they let the lip over there where they cut back in to pull back out. To fill.
The one inch lip?
No.
Oh, this is probably a different road then. You might want to write that down on the cell.
No, the driveways it did, did okay. But rather than rolling back up onto the, onto the shoulder? Yeah. They just cut it and brought it across the road, which is by Dandy, but that lip is not part of that's going to be in the ditch.
It's going to run down.
It's just going to be cutting into the road again. So, we need to kind of watch that because that was one of the complaints that I had about the lips being left on the road.
And you said it was.
T road, and I think it was two thirty, I think it's two thirty-eighth to the sixteen, one sixteen intersection.
No, I had a call on a different road.
Okay. But the lips were one of the things that somebody complained about the other day, the second year or something.
Yeah, I had, I had this call on a different road.
They called Ethan, what looked at because it also had some ditches there at the side where.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did.
I did ask him to do that, so.
Yeah, that base with one lip, the center's going to have three or four problems again, so. Your puddle right down, puddle right down, it looks hot, and they went over and then it'll suck.
I did have a discussion with a robbery, I tried to do it once, it was six, about a puddle. Yeah, he was dirty, he was dirty and I said, oh, it's going to go better than this. Uh, he comes there with me, I'm a much help to the guy and he was happy with that decision. So, anyway, I hope to, we're not ever going to talk about this anymore.
Excellent, it's on Scott's agenda to speak with them about our safety to him.
Yeah.
All right. He's got a little trouble down in the spot, but we have a special.
Yeah, perfect. All right, sounds good.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, appreciate it.
We have, we have had some conversations on, uh, using that higher product on the Johnson tracks. We've got some people calling in, uh, saying that it's looking good, it's taking care of it and they want to know what it is.
Okay.
So, we can solve it.
Good. All right, so, luck with it. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks.
Hi, Beth. How are you?
I'm good.
You're a little late for your.
I'm sorry.
What you got, get some information on the horse?
Yeah, I had Sam's running a bid on the same one. I didn't look what we had, a little bit upgraded. And I'd already had a bid for taro water, taro water was a little over twelve thousand. Sam made man in the ninety-six.
Nine seventy. And that's for the grasshopper?
Yeah, same old again, so.
That kind of what you wanted to go with?
Yeah, I sat down and asked Fury and he, he liked saying, so.
If you're comfortable with that, it's in your budget. I'm excited to look at it then.
I pulled it in front of us just last time I moved and went check it this morning. And I think it was, I had, had a little.
Okay.
And I asked him a question, like, this guy, which we're getting that out of the line. But if I didn't get the OP today, I don't want to have to worry. He said it'd be probably not this week, I think we'd get it this week, so.
Or London certainly good for, do you want to go, you want to get that, we'll get a motion up and see your quote?
Do I?
Can I see your quote, we'll get a motion. Can I see your quote, we'll get a motion. Motion purchase?
You get a purchase order.
You all good? Okay. So I'll make a motion that, uh, we purchased a grasshopper 727, the API, with a 3452 deck, driver seat, folding roll protection, with trade-in allowance of $5,500. So our total price would be $9,697.
That's great.
Okay, so properly moved consecutive purchasing Sam's equipment, the above named item, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carried.
And I have one other topic going on.
Okay.
As a building supervisor, everything, stuff going on in Memorial Hall, and I'm not aware of that right now.
Okay, such as?
I like the, uh, sort of helping out.
Uh, now, what is?
They have.
Oh, planning board?
Yeah, I mean, our, we've found out even if that's going to be, it was a bit of a.
Sure.
And they usually have to, they'll find out what's going on.
Okay.
Send out emails asking, and I've got another employee that has had meetings up here, that's nothing to do with. Yeah. She's not currently.
Okay, that should be, I mean, I, I have asked you in the past because, uh, the Democrats have had meetings over there and I've asked you in the past, and I'm trying to make sure that you know, and that is just a courtesy that you should have to know what's going on up here, being a building supervisor.
There's going to be a conflict.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I've read that, like, we have to try to keep, uh, keep, I don't know what's going on, and they seem active, so. And I went back to my unit and they, I'm in my office and they're going to keep that on.
Which is not right. Um, I'm. Did you send out an email to everyone? If people don't have the common courtesy to. And I know it's, it's, from my perspective, we have to explain to me that county employees can use that. No big deal. But if we are not going to let you know what's going on, because as, as Linda said, it could be a conflict. You know, two different people come in the same night and say, well, it was mine, it was mine, well, you didn't have anything on the board saying it was anybody's. Um, but what do we do? Just say, nobody can use it? I mean, I, I can't even go that route.
Me too. I mean, we, but. And we had emailed, I'll have Kristy send that one up.
Um, have Kristy send out another one from us. From the, from the commissioners.
All that turns to it. You can do that.
Alright, send out a, send out an email to, uh, basically all county employees, because like I said, from my perspective, county employees can use that facility after hours.
Kristy called me up with family, she marked off all of the heads.
Sure. And see, so if that, that comes about, you know, and, well, I'm, I'm going in there, well, no, you're not, because election vote set up, so on and so forth, so. Uh, I would send out an email from commissioners to all county employees stating that if, stating that you must, if you need to use Memorial Hall or you want to use Memorial Hall, that you must, uh, contact Pat O'Carroll to get it on their calendar, so we don't have conflicts. Uh, and so they know what's going on after hours since Pat is the building supervisor.
It's really true.
Okay, alright. I appreciate it. Okay.
I think I moved my key.
Do what?
I think I moved my key, so you can't.
Well, I told Kristy it's not going to be about the key, right?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, like I said, I need to be like that, but we need to know through you what is going on in the courthouse after hours.
And the election stuff.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they should be in there and they go get your key and go in there anyway, then that's, that's complies there. So we have, we have to crack down on this and get it stopped right now.
I took it up there and I had Kristy go that way, she had it. Probably, middle of October till, like, 10th of November, she had it booked, or she had it training and all this other stuff.
Yeah.
I took it over to them and I said, alright, here's the deal. They filled it out through November.
Yeah. I mean, the, the planning board has their regular meetings, if they have anything on, what, the third Tuesday or whatever that, or Sunday, whatever that is. But they've been having work sessions also, uh, but I think the work sessions, since they have the final draft, are done now, I believe, I don't know.
It'll be, it'll be done after this, so they will need this, so.
Yeah.
I'll have to talk to them, the elections stuff.
Okay. Alright, that's, well, that's what I was curious about too, so, yeah, so that's fine there.
She should let you know.
But she should let you know when they're having the work sessions also. I mean, that's just a given.
Alright, that's all I can.
Alright, um, anything more on the train out here at the sewer?
What are our plans for that? Are we going to blacktop that, that was mentioned at one?
Well, it was mentioned at one time, but then we, we had talked, do we, do we want to have just that blacktop? Or, you know, were you looking to go in and start to see the whole thing at some time?
I kind of hate blacktop because this end over here, there would be concrete, you might elevate the shit.
My personal opinion, I'd go back to concrete. An asshole of concrete are going to cause you danger, the same thing, so I'd go back to concrete.
And when I had, John had that response back, you know, how? I got a bid from that Eisenbar, yeah, Eisenbar's all, what he was going to do, I think it was like, dirty, like dirty-ish. And I did, because he's got to dig up a big area.
Yeah.
We just went from like seam to seam, and it was like.
So that was just for the concrete pad and then how is this going to be the work inside? Okay, well, I, I would, I would, uh, get back with John or keep calling every day until he did a response back or whatever.
You?
I mean, I know, I know he's busy, but we got to get a response back, so we can look somewhere else.
So he's going to be two different days on different kind of sizes or.
Yeah.
And I, when I talked to him, I said, you got to do it dead, or Eisenbar's there.
Yeah.
Figure it out, angle and everything.
Yeah.
That's why you're going to do, do two different film sizes, so.
Okay. Alright, I'll give him a shout. Alright, sounds good, much day, if you have to return, just keep, just keep looking every day.
Yeah. That'll get it.
Alright, yeah, it's good, thanks, Pat. Hey, we get you around time. Alright, that worked out good. Probably need to start a new segment. Okay? Try to find privilege, claims, legal claims of the county, 15 minutes.
I'm going to go into executive session for the purpose of attorney client. Or can we have 15 minutes starting at 2:00?
Claims against county.
Claims against county.
I'll second that. Uh, some properly moved consecutive to executive session for attorney client privilege, claims against county, any further discussion? Clerk, clerk with the court, head attorney. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carried.
But anyway, that's awesome. So.
Special section going on.
So many, multiple years.
Yeah, shit for time.
Yeah. I read, I read this. Okay. Keep it back. Oh, good. Got some housekeeping things to keep up here. Uh, have resolution number 2025 dash 19, the resolution regulating stop signs at the intersection of B Road and 178th Road in Jackson County. Uh, I entertain a motion to approve resolution number 2025 dash 19. Second, properly moved consecutive to approve resolution number 2025 19. A resolution regulating stop signs at the intersection of B Road and 178. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carried. Again, seeing as we have no official health officer, I would entertain a motion, appointing Amy Hallar to the office of Jackson County Health Officer. Okay, if you properly move a second debt, properly move consecutive to appoint Amy Hallar as the health officer of Jackson County. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carried. Wait, no. Oh, wait, we still have to sign.
So, we're going to have to turn that to.
Yes, sir.
So, I'm sorry.
Hi, Eric.
Hello.
How you doing?
Good.
You, would you give just a second?
No problem.
Now, we'll tell you that I attended the Farm Bureau Forge Dinner last night. There were several century farms. Farm family in the year, the word name was Susquehanna, Susquehannan, no 150s, but there were several centennials. Enjoyed a very good meal, very good speaker from the state Farm Bureau office and, uh, it was an interesting meeting with them speaking, because he was speaking on the, uh, the, how do I put this? The defeat of the bill in Denver to try to get rid of packing plants and, and slaughterhouses in Denver. That would double last the whole election, and then they were able to prove that. Uh, there was only one packing plant in Denver that processes lambs, and that, that's the biggest lamb processing plant in the United States, I believe is what he said. So, that would have been, put up 185 people out of work, uh, affected the economy in Denver, if it would have got that passed, so. It was, like I said, it's very interesting, very interesting speech, but those, those are coming more and more. There are several out of California that they had to, uh, defeat it out there. One did pass, but they didn't do packing plants in county or, so it didn't really matter. So, they're not going to have any ever now.
Did you go to the floodplain?
The what?
Floodplain?
Yes, I did, uh, went to the FEMA meeting, uh, wanted to feed those cans for the water, I believe. And, uh, they updated the FEMA labs, uh, for the floodplains, they added some, they took away some, uh, but talking, it's, you know, all of that's still up here anyway, since, uh, it looks like FEMA's not going to be around, so just kind of wait and see what happens there, whether our funding's going to be there or not, so. I forgot what that is.
I guess I'll, sure, maybe I'll take control a little bit and wrap it up.
Yeah.
Just kind of watch.
Can you say that? There you go. All right, Eric.
Ready?
Sure.
Are you sure?
We're positive. All good.
Oh, we have to go into executive session with personnel, first concerning public conditions. We're hearing that.
How long you want?
We're seeing tragic years.
Okay.
For 15 minutes, starting at 10:30. Uh, it's moving, Eric, attorney, our commissioners.
Okay, well, second that, we probably move consecutive to attorney, client, curpligis, personnel, for personal development, public conditions. For 15 minutes, we're gonna be back here in board at 10:30, board room at 10:30. Any further discussion? 10:45, starting at 10:30. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried, according to the executive session, 10:30.
Do you mind closing? Well, actually, she can do it, she's not supposed to come in there.
Anyway, appreciate you listening.
All right, thanks, Eric.
You bet. Have a good day.
We'll see you later. So, I just summary to the minister from last week. Give your thoughts for the emergency service yet?
No, I think I opened the call and that's what it's called.
Okay. Per. Cause I don't want it to run past our.
Other than that, they have.
They have?
They have not.
Have not, okay.
Yeah, I got your email and looked at it this afternoon. Seems like that's a theme.
How are you today?
I'm okay, how are you?
Good. If we were to think back about the other special use form that we had to meet on for by the way, we get all the people here.
Sale, the set, selling.
Selling.
Oh, that special event.
Special event, okay.
Yeah, that's, yeah, no. The department said that it would need to apply more information. We're back.
Hey, I heard anything more about the floodplain with.
Yeah, um, had an engineer out, the engineer was, uh, gonna work up, uh, how much it's gonna cost.
Again?
That was. The last time that I talked to the engineer, cause he wanted specifics on what we wanted and then I said I gave you all the paperwork and that's tells you everything that needs to be done, but I'm not gonna advise an engineer how to.
That's.
That's me. So, we're gonna have to. Is that already published? Do you know if that's already been published? Cause we do, we just have the license.
Are you vegetarian over here? I wouldn't think it would take very long.
I wouldn't think so, since we're in the neutral, I don't think they would have played you much. Uh, the planning commission for across all.
It's the Chinese or what did you say?
We didn't think about that.
Oh. That's just our regular.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we didn't think about that. That's our role, so.
Well, we used to.
Well, it wouldn't have fit everybody last year. So, you know, I don't think that there's going to be a playing this year because we're in the neutral, uh, so I would say let's just go ahead and have it and just do it over here. You guys, you guys do your hearing over there.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a.
Yeah.
It's a meeting.
So, then we'll just do it, we'll do ours over here and all good. I'm, I'm pretty satisfied with that. That sound good to you, Eric?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, like I say, I don't think it's gonna be, I think people got their questions answered, that wanted, they wanted answered at the budget hearing, not budget hearing, the budget meeting they had across all, where people coming to ask questions, Akinan asked questions. I think everybody was satisfied with what we had to say, especially since we're in the neutral this year, I don't think there are any complaints. So, I'm, I'm gonna say let's just go ahead and have your, instead of the four chairs, we need to call it good. That good, okay. All right, so there's no conflict, they were good.
Yeah, did you see the other?
The.
That.
Yes. And I haven't called David yet, I'll give him a hallway. You there with the letter?
Yeah.
What's the 17%?
It's like 1/6 of the company that visits every year.
Or what?
Or rent statute.
Oh, so.
And they have present side.
That's where guys, it's policy, I think.
State, state statute.
State statute, says they gotta, you gotta go confirm, present. Right, statute. So, guys, we're doing right of insurance.
It is what it is.
Yeah, it says they're supposed to do it, but it doesn't say that. But, you know. There again, I thought that was what the resolution was supposed to put her up and put in lack of law, if that's why.
Well, I mean, you can't, you can't really stop somebody from speaking their mind around their property.
Sure.
There's, I think the director will leave, and I'm assuming he wasn't able to perform what he wanted to perform, right?
Did he get everything he needed or not?
No, probably not, cause he was around the back at that point.
Yeah.
Which, okay, that's not really the issue, cause we deal with that.
No, the issue is.
On time to time.
Which is not the issue, it's testing out.
Not where we kicked out.
Yeah, I mean, we, we deal with that.
Well, I mean, the issue is also, good thing you were wearing that vest or I'm gonna grab my gun. That's not, you know, that's not proper acceptable behavior, I'm sorry, I don't care. It's not acceptable. You got right, say whatever you want, we've heard that in here before, blah, 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 but that's still not acceptable social behavior.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I, it is legal behavior, but it's not. Nice.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, there, there's, it's hard to draw the lines here.
It's who it is, okay?
He's on the planning commission. Yes, that's what frustrates me.
This isn't a, cause we deal with that and that, that creates, um, some anxiety with employees that have to go out and deal with that. It is what it is.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's very, very thing.
Right, it is who it is, though, but. Anyway, I just wanted you to be aware, this happened last week, yeah. For a second. Two more seconds. So, anyways, it's all right.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
You gotta value this. The accident still coming along, okay?
Uh, I think we had one person pay off and I need to get those fine numbers, yeah, otherwise.
Okay.
That was Kavis asking about the solar base. Ready, Pat. Maybe we have another work session related to file filing on.
Oh, there, that's, I'm there, so, great.
So, I'll set a little bit.
All right. And is there contact for me to look over the land lease, hay ground lease contract? Cause remember we got, were you sure, were you here with purpose here last?
We was here that last time, yeah.
Okay, when he, when he was talking about the army worms and having to go in and receive and I'm, I'm kinda like, I don't, I don't think that if we leased the hay ground out that it is the county's responsibility to go in and spray and receive.
Yeah, the problem with that is, is that I, I mean, that was why I think I asked for the grievance.
Yeah, did you get this?
But, yeah, that's, the, the problem always is that there's state statutes that has an agricultural state establish a lot of things in leases that are not written down about that.
Well, I believe that, that, and I know for sure that, unless it changed it since I looked at it last, but the city leasing the hay ground out of Prairie Lake, it was the, we sees, we sees or whoever's, we were saying it, responsibility to spray for noxious weeds, and I don't know about anything else, but noxious weed was, was a debt.
Well, there's a, if there's an agreement that says who manages, does the property, I'm fine with, you know, force of that as it's written, it's just a question of being, we agree with, what do you do if the agreement doesn't say anything about that? There's a pass, control or whatever. I mean, if they are getting, you know, they're basically saying we're paying the cash, but we earn, you know, $10,000 for sale of hay on this property, or we're paying $2,000, then their economic interest is to banish themselves because of renting from somebody who doesn't farm property as a tool, of course, right?
Right.
So, if I was, if I was in their shoes, I would be more interested in controlling itself and maybe someone who has no idea what they do.
Well, that's the thing, because if they don't, number one, fertilize, spray for noxious weeds, so on and so forth, then their hay crop's gonna go down and it's gonna be not cost effective for them to, to lease the hay ground. So, if you put in there that, that they are, they are responsible, you know, if army worms come and start destroying their hay crop, they're responsible for rain, not the county. I don't think the county should be in any great way, shape or form responsible, and that could seem very bad for shaking their head.
Oh, no, no, I just know this has been a really bad year for army worms.
Yes.
And I, and I had, like last year, I had to spray twice and I probably will this year.
Yeah.
But my renter usually takes care of the first spray, but I have to be out there all the time to identify that's going on and.
Like I say, I'm, I'm not, I'm. Like I say, I'm, I'm not, I, I personally am not in favor of the county being responsible to spray for the army worms.
It would be, would be like along the roadways.
Yeah.
Now would be.
The, the roadways are different, so I'm, I'm, I'm not at all in favor of that, you know, I mean, I think we need to look at that, because army worms have become more prevalent here in the last several years. Uh, somebody told me the other day, who was it, I think it was, that, uh, they were, well, they came about once every 16 years, well, 16 years, we're in a lot sooner. So that's the last time you roll, do you have to? Yeah, that, that was what, that was what he said he was told, and I was like, I haven't heard that before. I don't, I don't think that's quite true, but, you know, some years are worse than others, and, uh, was it two years ago, I believe it was, they were bad, and this year they're bad. So apparently they're becoming more prevalent, but I wish that, I wish you would look at that contract, like, email Kurt and ask if we can have that to look at, because if he wanted to do some changes in it too, he said, so make it for a longer period. But I, I think we just need to look at that. We need to worry about the army worms that are in the campground, it's not the army worms that are in the hay beds.
Yep.
So, all right.
Programing that too, I know I mentioned, that position's, it's not up in the air about a second, so.
Okay. Maybe do it now, right?
Yeah, okay.
And this letter that I got was from FEMA in regards to the, uh, meeting that I went to for the floodplain information, and it said we have 30-day data submission notification, if there's any changes that we want to see, um, I think that I will double check with, see if Senator Chris can. I think I'll double check for emergency management, and make sure that they got that, so they're all aware the way of putting the submission notification, so.
Changing burn mats and stuff?
Yes. So, no, but, changing. I, I really didn't see anything, like I said, there's some, uh, some areas that were going on, some areas that were coming off, but I didn't, I didn't really see any big changes. So I think Pat was, you know, good with what she saw, but other than the fact that we just got all the year about FEMA funding, who knows, so.
You going to stay with FEMA?
Yeah, all the minutes. I don't have anything else for you. Do you have anything else? Have anything else? Sign. Grant you? Are you grant you?
What is that, it's like a whole book?
It's official, it's official.
Official banners, oh, wow.
That's, you need to have a green.
Like paper, and then they, it's very nice.
Great, yeah, the, the paper stuff is all on the, like, out of your paper.
Fancy, that's resume paper.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of obviously 18, 2025, any further discussion.
Hearing done, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carried. All right, I think that's it. Terry, do you have anything else? Okay, all right. Uh, I entertain a motion to adjourn meeting.
So.
It probably moved, I'll second that, and it probably moved the second to adjourn meeting today, any further discussion. Hearing done, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, motion carried, meeting adjourned.
So we signed bills this week, in the week.
Heard it one way from Monday, Tuesday.
I'm scared.
Yeah.